One. I'd like to call to order this mayor commission budget work session. Today is August 4th, 2021, and the time is 10:00 a.m. So let's dive right in. Ms. Rothenberg, you're going to start with a presentation on the American Rescue Funds.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. It's my pleasure to be here today in front of you to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act and its funding. So quickly, we're going to look at the allocation of funds that were provided, qualified uses of those funds given to us in the interim final rules, and the administration's recommendation for expenditure of those funds. So first, a quick, quick look. There was approximately $45.6 billion that was allocated to metropolitan cities. They came up with the dollar values by using the CDBG formula. The city's allocation was $24 million and $24,530,820. As you're all aware, it's coming in two tranches. The first tranche we received in May, the second we anticipate to receive May 2022. So the monies can be spent for forward-looking expenses incurred from March 2021 forward. They have to be obligated before December of 2024 and spent by the 2026. So there are four broad categories that are what's considered eligible expenditures of those dollars. The first are monies that are spent to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. The second broad category is premium pay provided to eligible workers. There is another category for refunding lost revenues. And finally, the category for expenditures in appropriate infrastructure projects, including water, sewer, and broadband. So the first category, the public health and negative economic impacts, it's looking at those services and programs that are used to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And there's some specifically enumerated examples of things that the interim rule provides are eligible expenses, but it's really just an illustrative list. There are other things that could be considered, but this is, this slide that's up shows you some of those things that are specifically identified as eligible expenditures. The rules also point out that the public health impacts and expenditures that are appropriate are those expenditures that are, provide services to address behavioral healthcare needs that are exacerbated by the pandemic. Payroll of covered benefits for certain categories of employees, including public health, healthcare, human services, and public health and safety or similar, similarly situated employees. There's also a category of addressing negative economic impacts that were caused by the public health emergency, such as support for small businesses, assistance for workers and their families, speeding recovery of the tourism industry, travel industry, and hospitality sectors, and importantly, rebuilding the public sector capacity. Finally, in addressing negative health impacts and economic impacts, the rules stress a need to look at serving those hardest-hit communities and families, looking at the disproportionate impacts of those individuals and, and that type of thing. So those are all of the types of categories that we looked at when administration received the recommendations from the departments. Again, more negative impacts, looking at addressing educational disparities and promoting healthy childhood environments. A quick look at the overview of premium pay. Premium pay is for essential workers. It's limited to up to $13 an hour. That's above and beyond what the normal compensation rate is, and it's capped at $25,000 per worker. The regulations also, again, encourage that the payment should be prioritized toward your lower-income workers to offset disproportionate impacts to those workers. They also require that the workers who are compensated are workers who are actually physically present, and those who are working via telework would not be eligible workers for the purposes of premium pay. The premium pay also allows for, or wants to, again, look at those folks who make less money. So if the proposed premium pay would provide income over 150% of the greater of the county or state annual average, then it would require written justification of the mayor in order to provide those premium pay funds. Here, we also have a list of some of those categories that the rule says specifically are critical infrastructure sectors that would be eligible. But again, the rule provides the mayor with the authority to identify those employees that he believes are fit within, within the category. So the, the American Rescue Plan defines eligible workers as those workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors and additional sector as each governor of the state or territory or each tribal government may designate to protect the health and well-being of the residents of the state, territory, or tribal government. The interim rules and the direction that was entered following the definition that's contained in the act itself gives or extends what's listed here for the governor and the tribal governments to the mayor. So he then has the authority to identify those additional essential workers. The premium pay can be provided to government workers in addition to third-party employees who also fit within those categories.
Ms. Rothenberg, before you turn off that slide, so this seems to defer to the governor for the definition of eligible workers. Do we have any such lists from the state?
The interim rules?
No, this, ARPA defines eligible workers, those workers needed to maintain blah, 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 and additional sectors as each governor may designate.
Right, but all I'm saying to you is this provision from the American Rescue Plan Act as further specified and clarified in the interim rules does too apply to local government workers.
Okay, all right, so the interim rules bring it down to the local.
Exactly, and those additional workers that are identified by mayors are the appropriate persons of the government. So now we move to replacing lost revenues, which is the third of the four categories that are eligible expenses. In this category, there is broad latitude to the government to identify what to spend those funds on. Specifically, the only thing that it, it requires specifically is that you can support your services up to the amount of the lost revenue. It's really looking to make sure that governments are able to continue to provide to the residents the level of services that it was able to provide pre-pandemic. You can use, obviously, those funds to avoid cuts in services. The funds are calculated by comparing the actual revenue to an alternative of what should have been or could have been expected to occur in the absence of the pandemic. Those calculations are being managed and handled by finance. There are some very specific rules and guidelines, pages and pages of them, which I'm sure you don't want to become intimately familiar with, but the finance department will provide the actual number of the lost revenue amounts that we will be anticipating as, in replacing as recommended by administration. The years that the fund allows us to recover for are December 31, 2020 through December 31, 2023, projecting out the additional lost revenues that are calculated, again, based on formulas that are provided within the guidance documents. So the city may presume that all of the diminution of the actual revenue is, in fact, due to COVID-19, once those numbers are calculated. The final category that's outlined is investing in water, sewer, and broadband. They're very specific projects that the, again, the document, the guiding documents provide to us examples of things that would be appropriate expenditures. We received several recommendations from the utilities department. All of them had pretty hefty price tags on them. You'll hear from the administration on that. Broadband also is an eligible expenditure. We didn't have any needs in, in that regard within the city from the IT department. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Fay to discuss with you all administration's recommendations unless there's specific questions to me.
Any questions for the city attorney before she?
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of the board.
Good morning.
Staff and those in attendance. As it relates to administration's recommendations, when we look at the four categories, I want to start with the category that is not recommended, and that is the water, sewer, broadband. Given the estimated dollar tickets that's attached to those staff recommendations and also taking into consideration that additional funding, separate and apart from the rescue dollars, may be coming down the pack, we've determined that it would not be appropriate to consider that category for American Rescue Funds. With that being said, the recommendations that we are bringing forward for consideration are the three listed on the slide. First, to replace the lost revenue that the city has experienced and continue to experience, I would just footnote for the board as part of, of the budget process to balance for FY21, we had to deal with the $7 million of revenue loss. So I don't want that to be lost on the board as a starting place for replacing lost revenue. The second category is to provide premium pay. As we look at how the city was kept moving forward during the pandemic, we were able to keep public safety operations going as well as building our inspections, moving the city forward in terms of its growth and development. So we have looked at the broad spectrum of classifications who played a critical role in helping to keep the city operational during the pandemic and continues to do so. The third category that we are recommending is the category of public health and negative economic impacts. I would like to point out that we are not recommending any dollar amounts attached to the three categories, and that is by design, given that we have a public hearing in, pending that will affect what we do by way of dollar amounts. What I would like to do, Mayor, is to have on the replacement of the lost revenue, what is going to come forward by way of a recommendation is that the primary use of whatever dollar amount is allocated to this category be put toward vehicle replacement. As we sit right now, the city has about $8 million of critical vehicle replacement needs. That $8 million does not include the $2.2 million vehicle replacement needs in the police department, and the board heard a presentation about the police vehicle needs here recently. I would like to have our support services director to give the board an overview of that. And then, as it relates to the premium pay, I would like to have the HR director to do a brief presentation to the board on the various categories that we are recommending be included as it relates to premium pay. So with that, Ms. Mayor, if I may.
Ms. Johnson, before you proceed there, I think you need to reiterate, because you kind of rushed through it, why we are not recommending amounts today. You, you need to emphasize the rationale for that, please.
It's because of the fact that on the premium pay, we have a public hearing that is to be scheduled that relates to what the board is going to support by way of, of the union, how much the board is going to support in terms of what will be provided. So until that matter is solved.
It's the public hearing on the impasse, correct?
Yes, and until that matter is decided, I don't think it is appropriate for us to bring forward dollar amounts, given the vast number of categories of employees. I want to underscore that our recommendation is that we don't just provide premium pay to police and fire, because police and fire, while a critical role in keeping the city going, the city was kept going by other employees. Sanitation continued to do their job. The building inspectors continued to do their job. Finance employees continued to have checks cut. So from my perspective, it is not appropriate for premium pay to be limited to public safety employees, because the city was kept operational by a vast number of category of employees, and I think it's inappropriate to discount their role in keeping the city moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, if I may have Mr. Guzman to come up and give the board a brief overview of the critical vehicle needs that we have for FY22.
Good morning, Mayor James, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Team members and members of the public. I'm Mario Guzman, Director of Support Services. All right, overview, I'm going to talk about the history, some deferred replacements and maintenance costs, our current and the current fleet analysis we did, and some of what may happen in the future regarding the implications of not replacing equipment, delivery times, and city services affected. Little history, we did a quick comparison of replacement budgets versus maintenance budgets. Fiscal year 18, $300,000 for a replacement budget. Our maintenance budget was about $4.8 million. And this is all general fund. This is excluding the utility. This is for general fund vehicles, and also excluding police. So $300,000 for replacement budget, 4.8 maintenance, $500,000 in 2019, $6 million in maintenance. Fiscal year 20, $500,000 for replacement, 6.2 for maintenance. And fiscal year 21, this year, we got $250,000, and we're trending to hit $6.5 million. Two things to know, a garbage truck costs $350,000. Rescue pump, a rescue, a pumper costs about $800,000. Rescue unit costs about $370,000. So you talk about us trying to get real creative with these funds. It's either through leasing or selling and scrapping to try to buy some vehicles. I did put an asterisk there next to COVID. You can see in fiscal year 20, we got $500,000, and we still went above fiscal year 19, 6.2 million. It's important to note that when COVID hit, Recreation Department stopped providing those services. So a lot of vehicles were not being used, yet the maintenance still went up, and that's just because of the age of the fleet. Aside from the hard cost, there's opportunity cost that we're losing as well. Decrease in efficiency has taken much longer for our team members to do their job, be it sanitation workers, streets workers, parts workers. Also, the morale, these individuals, men and women, are paid, they're in the business of fixing things, and you want to see an upset employee take away their tools to complete a job. Overtime increased, downtime increased as well, and also process time. Because of the workload, a lot of things were just outsourced, so there's a lot of redundancies in services. There's a cost to cut a check, a cost to write a contract, all those things that you don't factor in, that's, you know, what I like to consider opportunity cost. So a little bit of the history. Current situation, so what we do every year is, through our system, we kind of track all of the high maintenance assets. And once we identify those, we sit down with every division and department head and identify those assets and work with them collaboratively to identify what needs to be replaced and what it needs to be replaced with. So currently, we ended up categorizing them with critical replacements and recommended replacements. The list combined was actually $12 million. I presented that to Armando, he gave me a funny look, so I walked away, and we cut out the recommended replacements and just focused on the critical replacements, and that was the $8 million that Administrator Johnson had spoke about. And that breakdown is community services, $40,000, fire rescue, 4.5, parks and recreation, $400,000, public works, $3 million. And I put $2 million, but the police department had presented weeks prior as 2.2 million for a total of 10.2. So that's the breakdown of the need. And even though we needed $12 million, and I'm not one to turn down money, best management practices, we don't want to replace everything at once, because that means that everything goes bad at once, you want to cycle it in. But we identified $8 million as critical replacements that provide services. A further fleet composition of what we're breaking down, fire rescue, 24 units. Those range from 1995 to 2014. Public works, 17 units from 2003 to 2015. Parks and recreation, 10 units from 2002 to 2015. Community services has one unit, 2003. The replacements include garbage trucks, rescue units, buses, mowers, trailers, trailers, and just numerous pieces of equipment that service the public. It's important to know, even though you see a 2015, for certain units, like a fire rescue unit, like a garbage truck, that's a five-year lifecycle. Those first five years, you're going to have maintenance costs, but at that five-year mark, that's where you really want to sell that asset, because we're seeing good money residuals. But when you start climbing into that sixth and seventh years, when you start seeing those maintenance costs skyrocket, so I just want to, you know, make sure people see that. When I see a 2015, should have been replaced in '20, so it's past its lifecycle costing us more money. So some of the impacts in the future, definitely an increased maintenance cost, increased downtime, service delays. We're starting to experience that now. Teams coming in on Saturdays and Sundays to make sure these garbage trucks are up and running. If you were to cut me a check today, six months to a year and a half, depending on the piece of equipment. If it's a pickup truck or something like that, or a trailer, we might get that in six months. If it's a rescue unit or a garbage truck, anywhere from a year to a year and a half. And also, the police equipment, as I stated last week, would be like about a year. Some good news to, to note, all those replacements, once they come in, we're going to sell those assets. So we will be seeing some surplus revenue with the sale of those assets. Being very conservative, I'm going to say a 10% residual from those assets, but I suspect more, given our recent auctions. So that's some, some positive news regarding the, the sales of those assets. And the investments in replacement vehicles will allow for reduced costs, increased service efficiencies, starting in fiscal year 22, 23, and allow the city to better manage and kind of have a level set so we can fund for future needs. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Guzman? Okay, Ms. Johnson? I'm sorry, we do have a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Do you know what the total is of our entire fleet? What's the total value? So in other words, in, in the 10-ish million, what percentage of our fleet does that represent? I know there's a lot of numbers to crunch in there.
We can, we can get that data. We have all the, if I had to take a guess, let me get back to you, I'll give you the exact figure. We can see the, the total value. I think sanitation department alone, if you just look at all their assets, I want to say at least 80 million is just that fleet, just with their, no, not 80, I'm sorry, let me take that back.
Don't guess.
Yeah, I'll get you the exact figures.
What I'm trying to understand is how, how big of a push is this comparatively to the whole, as we're going to phase this in over time, looking at the entire fleet? So this is going to take care of today, but then what do we have coming down the road? So looking at how, how big our fleet is and the ages of our fleet, this will take care of us, but for how long?
Well, this will take care of the critical needs. As I mentioned before, it's $12 million with the recommended replacements. The way it works in this business, you're not going to run a vehicle till the tires run off, because it's too late by then. So we've identified 8 million that's critical, that's needed right now. We're going to need 4 million next year. And then it's a, it's just an approach of looking at, okay, we might have to replace some things a little bit sooner, extend some things out, so that, for argument's sake, let's say you have 10 vehicles for the fire department, let's say you have 10. You don't want to replace 10 at once, you don't want to replace five every five years, you want to do two, you know, two every, every five years, so you have a fresh vehicles coming in, and that allows you to have frontline units and reserve units. So to answer your question, 8 million will put us to be, you know, so we're not having crisis mode, and then the 4 million next year will put us in a better position to, to start managing the fleet, but it has to happen every single year. I showed you, I think, one of the slides where, you know, 200,000, 500,000, that's just not sustainable.
Sure, and, and I understand phasing things in over time so that your vehicles don't all age out at the same time. Just having a broader understanding of the bigger picture, I think, is what I'm looking for. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you for the presentation. Quick question about the slide in the beginning where you talked about, is about on average, about a half a million dollars in replacement budget, and on average, about 6.5 million in maintenance each year. Is, is that typical to be that imbalanced like that?
No. When it comes to fleet, you're always going to have an expense. Garbage trucks always break down, rescue units always break down. So you actually want to see more on your capital and less on your, your maintenance budget, because having more on the capital will allow us to increase our opportunity cost by having to increase in efficiencies, overtime, morale, all those kind of things. Once you get, we get to a good place, you know, our goal is ideally to pre-fund vehicles and treat vehicle replacements as an operating fund and not as a capital fund, not me sitting here, hey, we need breakdowns, we need money. We want to have it to, to where every vehicle is set up like an escrow account, you pay into it, and you know what's being replaced at what given time. So with these funds, it would allow us to at least have a level set to hopefully create that kind of program.
Follow up.
Thank you. So this was a trend years before COVID. Can you talk a little bit about how we got to that scenario?
I'm going to have to defer that to the previous administration, and, I mean, we read the numbers, but it was the funding issue.
Yeah, Assistant City Administrator Armando Fana. I mean, this is just, like a lot of things, is we've never caught up to the previous downturn in the economy. And so the fleet, if you look at the fleet, the way it was managed previously, we've never gotten to a point where, as Mario said, we're replace, we're not only replacing vehicles, but we're setting up funds for future replacements. And so this, you know, get these additional funds, as you said, will kind of get us a level set to hopefully move forward with that type of, of, of funding mechanisms where we're pre-funding and putting some money aside every year, so we're not stuck in these crisis modes year after year. But this goes back a very long time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it was the next slide after this slide that listed, yeah, the, the numbers totaling 10 million. I believe at the beginning, we said we were going to attribute 8 million to this, but not the 2 million to the police. And I was curious if the 2 million we're talking about here for the police vehicles is what we discussed with using for the unassigned fund balance for, or is it something that's just still in the air, something that we need to work out where that fund, those funds are going to come from?
If I could, Mayor, I can take that.
Yes.
The 2 million was part of the presentation from Captain Clark. The 1.6 million for this fiscal year is what the board approved on a following city commission meeting. The 2.2 million, which was the actual number, is what the slide indicated was going to be needed for FY22. The demarcation here is that Support Services does not maintain police's fleet, so we've added it in this slide. Under Support Services, they maintain all of the other departments' fleet that are listed here. Police maintain their own fleet. But that does not mean that we have set aside the 2.2 million that police need, it's just maintained by police themselves. So the board will see that as part of the discussion when we get to the proposed balanced budget. And I want to prepare the board that you're not going to see in the proposed balanced general fund budget, the 2 million for police. The money is not there, but we are footnoting that they do have a need and probably will come back and ask the board if it's not going to be included in the funding here at some point. They will come back and ask the board to approve it from discretionary fund balance.
Follow up, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to clarify, if we decided we wanted to use these funds that we're talking about today for the police fleet, is that appropriate, or is it something we can't use these funds for?
I would say that it would be premature in that we still have a pending threshold issue that's going to guide how much funds would be left for the board to consider for vehicle replacement. So I would say that it would be premature. Until that union impasse matter is settled by the board, I think it's premature to recommend dollar amounts for any of the categories.
Okay. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Johnson, I think my question is more for you on the, the theory of kind of taking this, these funds in particular, and using it for this purpose. So under the American Rescue Plan guidelines, we are using this money to replace lost revenue. When we went through the budgeting process, there were a number of departments that squeezed down a lot of things out of their individual budgets. And so I guess when I see refunding lost revenue, I think of those individual departments and how they would get back some of those resources. Is the idea here that we are looking at replacing vehicles across a broad category of departments? And so when we look at the, the budget for next year, in essence, those departments wouldn't have to fund these needs, and then those funds would be opened up to kind of help out with those, those things that were cut out of department budgets?
No to the last question. These funds would not be used for departments' budget, and we need to put this in the context of the two sides of the ledger. So departments' budgets were cut back, some of them cut into the bone, not to the bone. But that was on the operating side. These are one-time dollars. So these funds are recommended for items that fall into a one-time category, and that's capital. Because of where we were with the budget, departments were not permitted to include vehicles in their budget, and therein lies the crux of the issue of why we have this critical need. Now, departments didn't have capital in their budgets this year, but this trend goes back many, many years, where because we didn't recover from the two thousand and nine real estate recession, that was one of the sacrifices that departments made, where they were not getting capital items, so it was not in their budget. In terms of replacing their resources, I don't see us being in that position for another few years, because the operating budget has to be able to assort that, because it's an ongoing cost.
Understood, and, and I think you answered my question in there, as far as a theory. We're looking at different, different pockets of money. And from a holistic point of view on every department, I think it sounds like the theory is to be able to use those different categories of funds to fulfill the needs, and looking at the whole picture of a department versus trying to break it into pieces of operational versus capital.
Yes, but that's how I have to look at the budget. That's how I have to look at it, because you don't want to bill your operating budget on one-time money, because you're going to have a major hit and gap that ensue in years. So as a matter of best practice from a budgeting standpoint, you never bill an operating budget on one-time money, unless you have guaranteed revenue that's coming in the ensuing year to backfill that gap. So that would not be a practice that you will see me bring forward as your city administrator.
Understood, Administrator, very familiar with capital and operational budgeting. I guess when I'm looking at this, where I'm trying to drill down, and maybe I'm looking at it from a different angle, is that if we're replacing lost revenue, the, the guidelines look at lost revenue completely over time, not necessarily just lost revenue due to COVID specifically, because obviously, this wasn't due to COVID specifically. This is a number of factors that have built up over time, and I guess that's just what I'm trying to understand in, in the guidance.
Okay, so let me see if I can clarify that, and maybe the city attorney can better articulate this than me. The lost revenue has to be tied to COVID nineteen. However, the city has the discretion to then take the reimbursement of that lost revenue and apply it to needs that will help keep the city going, you know, as it relates to addressing issues that are related to COVID. So if I take fire rescue, for example, we need to have fire rescue trucks on the road to still continue to provide services to residents that may be impacted by COVID or a number of other things, so that's how the two relate.
That, that explains it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Guzman? Commissioner Lambert.
Actually, it's, it's for Administrator Johnson, but based on this slide here, I, I completely understand the statement that was made before we started this, that we're still anticipating a public hearing regarding the impasse. What I just want some further clarification on is, Ms. Johnson, I'm hearing you say we're not making financial recommendations, but all I'm hearing that is relating to the two or two point two million related to the police. Is that correct? Because there's other numbers up here, I, I guess I just would like some, and I'm seeing heads nodding in different directions from this data, so it seems like there may be some confusion.
Okay, let me make certain, I'm understanding the question. We're not making funding recommendations at all. I'm not making a funding recommendation on the two point two related to police. I'm not making funding recommendations at all. What I indicated is that if the police vehicles, at whatever point, the impasse matter gets settled, and then the board decides how it wants to allocate the twelve point five million dollars here in these three categories. If it does not include enough to cover police vehicles, what I expect is that police is going to come back and ask the board to consider that out of discretionary unassigned fund balance. And I don't know if that answers your question.
I think maybe some, some confusion may be, these numbers are not recommended numbers for this.
No, not at all.
This is just the current situation.
Yes, yes.
This is the description of the situation. You're not recommending eight million or ten million be sent.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Clarify the confusion.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. President.
Along those lines, I know Commissioner Fox had, if I understood her question correctly, would, was whether the funds would be appropriately used on the police department fleet, and you had said it would be premature to consider that, because we don't know where we are with regard to the negotiations. It would be an appropriate use potentially, though, the police department fleet of these funds, just like any of these other categories.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this particular portion of the presentation? Okay, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Rodriguez to come up and give the board an overview of the various categories that we are proposing be considered for premium pay when we get to the point of making decisions about premium pay allocations.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The purpose of my part of the presentation is to give you an overview of the essential worker job classifications that we are recommending for discussion purposes, for your consideration, and also the number of, preliminary number of employees that we believe would be impacted, and then, of course, have commission question and discussion on the items. A couple of key points setting this issue up is that the types of positions that we are proposing are not, as previously discussed, only public safety, because there were a number of employees across various classifications that kept different operations, whether at the water plants, out in the community, in the parks, in city hall, running, which support, you know, all of the services that the city provides, including public safety services. The estimated number of employees that, that would be deemed essential under our proposal for consideration is about twelve hundred and seventy-five. The reason why you don't see all sixteen hundred and eighty-five FTEs is because employees that regularly worked remotely during the pandemic emergency cannot receive American Rescue Plan funds, so those automatically have to be taken off the table. So you will see in later slides, slides where you have more job classifications that employees that would be affected, because we would have to go by each classification that you wind up approving, and then, you know, kind of tease out the employees that, you may have two employees in the same classification, but one worked remotely and one didn't, and the one that didn't gets the, the COVID premium pay. The ones that came in here, were out in the community, get the COVID pay, but the ones that work remotely will not, even though they may have the same job title. And when we add up all of the classifications, all of the preliminary classifications across public safety, the unions, and non-public safety, it comes out to about two hundred and twenty-nine different job titles. Job classifications and job titles is an interchangeable term in HR terms. So the first group is public safety. Our estimate is that that would affect about two hundred and ninety-four positions represented by the FOP, and those categories that you see there, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and then the non-sworn members of the FOP, crime scene investigator, community service aid, latent print examiner, and senior latent print examiner. Similarly, for the fire positions, we would have approximately two hundred and fifty employees in those five categories of firefighter, captain, battalion chief, lieutenant, and driver engineer. For the PMSA, the Professional Managers and Supervisors Association, our initial estimate is approximately forty-five positions, but there, as I previously mentioned, you see more than forty-five job classifications, because we would have to go through each job classification and determine which of those people qualify. But all of these positions that we are recommending on, for PMSA, non-union employees, and for SEIU, were arrived at by looking at the types of functions that those positions performed, and whether those positions, for the most part, would have been positions that would have likely been performing duties in person versus performing duties, job duties remotely. And that's what led to the, to the compilation of this list, so there is a logical reason why some positions are here and some positions may not be here. And of course, this is just a draft for discussion purposes that's subject to the input and the, you know, the commission and the mayor. For the SEIU union, we similarly see that we would, we think we would probably be approximately three hundred and twelve positions or employees that would be affected in these various job classifications, which range from telecommunications that reported on, in person, to process 911 calls, parks maintenance workers, street sweepers, sanitation workers, irrigation takers. We also see administrative assistants, because some administrative assistants, because of their functions, couldn't work remotely, others could. So some of those administrative assistants also would be impacted and would, may qualify for any premium pay the city may decide to, to award or to budget for. For the non-union represented positions, a rough estimate is three hundred and seventy-four positions across these various job titles upon our initial review. And they, they run the gamut from, you know, clerical and administrative positions to some, to some supervisory positions and specialized positions. So in, in summary, that twelve hundred and seventy-five estimate of affected employees that I mentioned in my first slide is comprised of the two hundred, two hundred and ninety-four for the police union, two hundred and fifty in the fire union, forty-five in the PMSA union, three hundred and twelve in the SEIU union, and then non-union employees, about three hundred and seventy-four to get to that title, to that total. And that represents about over two hundred and twenty-nine job classifications that would be up for consideration. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioner, I mean, President Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just my thoughts. I think that it would be appropriate for there to be like three classifications of employees, those that were frontline workers who had close and daily contact with the public, not necessarily just first responders, because there's other, there's other frontline workers who are out there and, and showed up to work and, and had close contact, had no choice but to be in people's houses, or, you know, one-on-one with people. And then the next category would be those who came to work, were physically present, worked behind the scenes, and had, had some contact maybe with the public, maybe with a, a screen in front of them, or, you know, that kind of, of contact, not necessarily the kind of exposure that the frontline workers would have. And then third, the category that I guess would not even be considered regardless, because they're not eligible under, under this, would be those that worked remotely. But I think that, so can there be a graduated premium pay, that, that those who had the most exposure, that were on the front lines, get the, get the lion's share of the premium pay, and then have it graduated down depending on the duties that they had to perform during the pandemic?
Well, we are not recommending amounts per employee category, so in terms of the final list of categories that would qualify, the number of employees that would qualify, and whether those employees are divided into one, or two, or three groups, and what amount each group receives, that is all subject to the direction of the mayor and the commission. We are not recommending it. The purpose, the way that we presented this presentation is at a higher level, just so that you can get a ballpark of how many employees may be affected, and how many job categories may be affected. But how that's divided and teased out and budgeted would be a, a direction from, from the dais.
And, and, and Mr. Rodriguez is right. We don't know yet how big the pie is that we're going to have to divide, and that will affect our approach, our thinking. Once we determine the size of the pie, we could come back with more specific recommendations. But your point is, is noted. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, did you have something to add?
I, I did, and this is just to assist you and guide your discussion in this regard. I just want to read from the interim rules as it relates to premium pay. It says, "To ensure that premium pay is targeted to workers who faced or face heightened risk due to the character of their work, the interim final rule defines essential worker as work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others."
And we will take that into account when we're coming up. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think what would be helpful is, I know we're not recommending specific amounts, but if we could talk about the parameters, there were parameters listed, like something thirteen dollars per hour, not to exceed a hundred and fifty percent, et cetera. If we could understand a minimum and a maximum, if you will, to understand what the financial commitment could be from the city. Again, I know, not a recommendation, but I think it's, it's difficult for me to look at the numbers that we have and understand where financially we would be, you know, at, at the, following the guidelines, because these guidelines give us certain parameters as well. So I don't know if there's some way to quantify it. Again, I understand the nuance of, of having an upcoming public hearing, of which different evidence will, will be presented, et cetera. But it will be even difficult in that circumstance to understand where financially we have twenty-four million dollars that we're looking at in total, this need and various other needs. I guess it would be important to know where we would fall at a maximum level and where we would fall at a minimum level, based upon employee category. If you could kind of explain, even if just given one, one position, be it an administrative position, what an example of premium pay would look like for that position within the minimum and maximums of the parameters?
Let me take that. You know, at this point, there is no way that we can establish, you know, what a minimum would look like and what a maximum would look like, in that the mayor and the board has full discretion to just determine the dollar amount that you want to allocate toward each employee group that you determine to be eligible for premium pay. So it's, 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 it's literally impossible to establish what a minimum would be and what a maximum would be, you know, theoretically. The board could say, after you look at the list of categories, based on some sort of definition, if we take Commissioner Paduzzi's example, by frontline and then that second category, the board could determine for that second category, we want to just give X dollar amount. And if you want to do a delta between that second category and the first category, then we're going to do an up, a, a, a variance increase of X amount to the first category. So it's very- So, it's very difficult, Commissioner Shoff, to do, you know, a range, you know, unless the board uh says, uh we're going to allocate this total dollar amount for premium pay. And administration, we want you to go back and then decide, you know, based on all of the positions that we support as eligible for it, to determine uh how you want to do by ranges, but I think doing it by ranges is is inappropriate, it's just a lump sum amount.
Yeah, and I I understand, I think that's why I'm trying to get some parameters around, just understanding how the guidance is laid out, and and maybe what you're saying is it's completely an open book as to what what we can do here, but is it typically, so just as I look at category to category, is premium pay determined typically by job title? Is it determined, I I'm struggling whenever we we started out here and said something about $13 an hour, do you take an hourly premium pay and apply it to someone's pay typically? How, how is this determined, or is it just determined by us sitting as a board and saying, as a lump sum, um each job category is awarded this, this amount?
I think it's determined by, I'll let the city attorney, but I think for the most part, it's determined by the lateral, you know, by the board, but I think there is some guidance in in.
The information that was provided in the presentation was just that, it's guidance, and what it said was you can pay, I mean, it put, it put the maximums on the table, so it says to to you, the guidance documents, you can pay up to $13 an hour and no more than $25,000 per person, that's your maximum, but your your minimum and how you do the re remainder of it is is up to you, and then it gives you additional guidance, we want you to focus on the lower income wage earners, we want to make sure that if you want to provide money to folks who are the higher wage earners, that you provide that justification when it's over 150% of the state or the county um average for that particular job title. So, there are some parameters, but they're really just guideposts to help you in making your final determination.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioners, uh we will come back to you with more specific recommendations. This is kind of a two-part discussion, the the first part is just so you could see, and there's more background information, the 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 number of categories, job titles, et cetera, uh but as we, and go going back to my pie analogy, once we figure out the size of the pie, uh then we will, you know, crunch the numbers and make recommendations to you, and so we'll have that second conversation, but but you're not expected to, you know, just pull numbers out of the the air to to come up, we we will do that analysis, keeping in mind the guidelines and and recommendations that that have been set forth, and when we come back to you, we will have a uh uh the the business case laid out as as what our recommendations are, why we made the recommendations, and then we'll have a more informed discussion as as a group. Uh, so this is kind of a two-stage uh conversation here, and and we're just entering the first stage.
Yes, correct.
Uh, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Mayor, for that explanation. Uh, my question is, I guess, going forward, I, you know, spent the last year working at home, and so I am very supportive of premium pay for all those who had to come in to keep our city running, but I also think it would be helpful for me if, going forward, when we make our final decisions, I know that there are some categories that were given at least cost of living allowance raises last year, and there are other unions that we are still negotiating with that did not have a contract at all, were not given any um raises, premium pay, anything like that, so it would be helpful for me to know in those categories that you presented, if we could see which of those um job titles were given um a cost of living allowance last year so that we could help make our decisions.
Well, that question I can answer based on the presentation, because in this slide you see non-union uh positions, non-union positions did not receive it across the board last year. So, i- if you were a member of the public safety unions or SEIU or PMSA, you received a cost of living adjustment, if you were a non-union employee across various categories, from management all the way to to across all the departments, if you were not in a union, you did not receive a cost of living, so that's, you know, that that would help you, but we we try to, when we develop these types of recommendations, to have some consistency so that you don't have a situation where within a jo- one job classification, you've got, you know, one person receiving this much of a stipend who has the title, perfect example is administrative assistant, you had some administrative assistants that were part of a union that received a COLA and others that didn't. So, when you start getting into uh COVID pay and you start saying, well, these administrative assistants are gonna get $150, just for argument's sake, but these are gonna get 200, they're within the same category, so you try to have a uniformity and equity, so so I would just, that would just be the only, from an HR perspective, the only concern that I would ask you to 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 consider, that that as simple as you could make it is better.
Yeah, Mr. Rodriguez, I think we can also answer the question on what groups actually receive uh COVID stipend, we know that uh public safety received a COVID stipend of $1,200, PMSA received $600, and SEIU did not receive a COVID stipend, and neither did any of the non-union employees receive uh a COVID stipend, so that has already been provided, we 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 know that.
Yeah.
And and when we come back to you, we will have that information available to you, to remind you, we'll make sure we have that as part of the uh presentation for the second phase, the backup, okay? I'm I'm asking.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions of Mr. Rodriguez's comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Johnson.
Mayor, if you give me a minute, let us just shift gears to the next presentation.
Take your time.
I'm gonna ask the staff who are assisting in the presentation, if you would come to the staff table, Chief Matty, uh Nancy Urcheck, and Linda McDermott.
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, good morning again, for the record, Fay Johnson, City Administrator, I'm going to lead uh the presentation regarding the fire assessment fee, and I will be supported and joined uh by members of staff uh at the staff table, uh the Deputy City Attorney, Nancy Urcheck, the City's Budget Manager, Linda McDermott, and the City's Fire Chief, Chief Matty. So, I want to first start with putting in perspective the objectives of this presentation. Uh, one is to confirm that the use of the fire fees uh do in fact comply with the City Ordinance Governate, which is Ordinance 4141-08. I want to start out by emphatically stating that there has been no misuse of the City's fire fees. Secondly, an objective is to clear up the discrepancy about the 2019 commitment on the use of the fire fee increase revenue. I want to have a discussion on the fallacies and what was represented to the board at that time, and then point out the missed opportunities to rectify the record. Also, I want to clarify the transparency issue related to administration providing quarterly fire assessment fee work sessions. So, again, three objectives, to confirm, clear up, and clarify. And before I get into that, I want to, I'm gonna ask you, Mayor, and members of the board, to keep two uh things in mind, and Mayor, you have had heard me say one of them uh on a regular basis, every story that is presented sounds factual in nature until it lines up with the other side of the issue. There are always two sides of an issue, so I ask you and the board to at least give administration the benefit of the doubt until you hear the other side of the issue. Secondly, I am asking the board to bear in mind that because you don't use funds in a manner that someone else prefers that you use them, does not mean that you are misusing funds. You may prefer that our general fund be used in a certain manner, and we use it at your direction in another manner, that does not equate to misuse of funds. And then the other thing I want to clarify is that as I see him a credential manager, there are consequences if I were, as the City Administrator, knowingly take action to either misuse, misappropriate, or misapply public dollars. That's not an action that I am going to put 35 years of a stellar career in jeopardy. And just think about that, why would I? What do I stand to gain by knowingly misusing, misappropriating, or misapplying fire assessment fees or any other fees in the city's coffers? It does not make logical sense. So, we go on now to the agenda. As an overview, I want to just go back and highlight the inception of how the fire assessment fee came about, and I know for most of you sitting on the dais, this is going to be redundant, and I ask that you bear with me, and I'm gonna go through it very quickly. Then to do a a summary of the collected fire fees between FY09 and FY18 and the uses of those categories, and we're break, I'm breaking it up into those three components because it's relevant here as we look at it, because in those three-year periods between FY09 and FY18, we had one set of rates, then we had another set of rates for FY18 that was implemented, uh and then one in FY19 that was for fiscal year 20. Want to do a summary of the FY21 operating expenses, then address the threshold issues, and then go into next steps. So, as I look at the fire department's arc chart, we did this from a functional standpoint, and I want to uh thank Chief Matty uh for helping to put this into perspective. So, as you look at the functional arc chart of the fire department, everything in terms of those functions are eligible to be funded by the general fund, and had in fact been funded all by the general fund up until the point that the fire assessment fee was enacted. When the fire fe- uh assessment fee came into the picture, everything in this function of the fire department was eligible with one major exception, and that's emergency medical, and I think the board is fully aware that it is not permissible to use fire assessment fees on emergency medical, and I will tell the board that no fire assessment fees has been used in that uh regard. So, as we move on, looking at the inception of the fire fee, under the city's uh under its home rule powers that is granted by Florida statute, it allows the city to impose special assessment on properties, and sometimes you see special assessments related to uh stormwater, but certainly in this case, uh as it would be with stormwater, the properties must receive a special benefit from the provided source. By way of inception, during the summer of 2008, which was fiscal year 08, the city retained Government Services Group, acronym GSG, to develop a fire fee special assessment program. At the time of that discussion, the forest department budget that was adopted was 31.7 to 31.2 million dollars for talking purposes, 227 FTEs in the city's population was 103,663. At the board's June 2, 2008, City Commission Meeting, the first public hearing on Ordinance Number 414108, authorizing the special assessment imposition and collection, was acted on by the board. At the board's June 16, 2008, City Commission Meeting, the second public hearing adopting Ordinance 414108, authorizing the special assessment imposition and collection, along with that as a companion item, Resolution Number 21208 actually approved the assessment method and established the rate, and then the program itself became effective October 1 of 2008, which was the fiscal year 09. So, when we look at the ordinance, 414108, when you look at Article 1, Section 101, and I handed out copies uh for members of the dais because recognizing that's very small print uh to read, so you have a hard copy in front of you, it lays out the various uses that is permissible for the fire assessment fee, and I want the board to take particular note to how the ordinance lays it out, it goes through an affable ties use starting with A to P, so the use of those funds have to fall within one of these various categories that is permissible by ordinance of the City Commission, and you're gonna see these letters referenced later on in the presentation. So, in terms of how we budget, when you look at what the ordinance permit, we budget on a categorical then-line item basis. The ordinance, if we take what is allowed in the ordinance and apply it to how the city budget is laid out, it allows for salaries that would be in a category of personnel services, it allows for the various line items that's listed under the category of material and services, some of those fuel, parts, maintenance, repairs, and utility, computer services, labor, and the list goes on. It allows for capital, and capital tend to be the focus of the discussion when we talk about the fees, however, I don't want it to get lost in translation that salaries are not permitted, it's clearly permitted in the ordinance, it's clearly permitted in the So, when we look at what the board did back at Resolution Number 21208, when the program was first enacted, these were the rates that were approved, the residential at $25, and then the square footage rate on the various other categories, which are non-residential By way of the budget again, the fire assessment fee is actually put in a separate fund from the general fund, and that fund is 131, a capital fund, and it tends to be for things like improvements, replacement of fire equipment and machinery, and you have seen this before, that the fee itself provides comprehensive fire services related to suppression, prevention, and other fire services, and then some of the benefits uh that were talked about, how it uh is allocated to protect the value and integrity of improvements to real property to reduce the cost of fire insurance, and that relates to the city's ISO rating, which is a benefit to our residents, I think our rating right now, we're at a two, and we're working hard to get to a one, it enhances the market perception and property values. So, when we look at this first period, where the fee stayed at $25 for residential and for the square footage of the categories that are indicated in the resolution, during that time, 19.6, for rounded purposes, $20 million was collected in the fire assessment fee, 11.4 million was allocated to Fund 113 for various capitals, that H, if you look at your hard copy in the ordinance, that's what the H uh relates to, that is permissible under that ordinance. When we look at the balance of that, the 8.2 million was allocated to the general fund for. general fund for salaries, uh, related to the fire department. Uh, the fire assessment fee revenue that was in the general fund that was done for salaries was done between fiscal year ten and fiscal year sixteen, and it was for personnel expenses in the fire department on the fire side of the operation, not medical. If you look at the ordinance under item H, it clearly says for salaries. In addition to the twenty million for talking purposes that was collected during that period, the city also took out a line of credit of about fifteen million. Only a portion of that line of credit was drawn down. The ordinance allows for debt service under the fire fee. That debt service again is picked up in the ordinance. So if you look at just some of the capital purchases that were done, the blue line is a break between what was done prior to the fire fee being enacted and then above the line relates to the fire stations that came online and refunded by fire fee revenues. So that's station five, four, eight, and nine. And then some of the other capital-related, uh, projects that was done, fire station one door and window repairs, seven roof repairs, two roof repairs, and the exhaust ventilation system, all permissible under the ordinance. So now we go to when the city then began to increase the fee from the twenty-five dollars on the residential side. So as part of the F Y nineteen budget process, there was, uh, in June of two thousand eighteen, resolution number twenty-one eighteen, which came ten years after that initial fee imposition. And if you look at that resolution, which is a public record, uh, for everyone to take a look at, some of the things that it noted in terms of why the fee increase was being considered was that, you know, it was to offset the increased operating costs of the department. The fire department's operating cost was noted in the resolution had increased significantly since the imposition of the fee in two thousand eight. At that time in F Y eighteen, the adopted budget for the department was forty point one million, the F T Es had grown to two hundred and thirty-one, and the city's population had increased to a hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and six. The resolution also noted that there was additional costs anticipated due to additional call volume from the increased population. It assumed additional maintenance of fire trucks and equipment, acquisition of additional equipment, hoses, and apparatus for fire stations four and eight, and then also, uh, to provide, uh, funding for additional firefighters that was initially funded through grants. So again, if you look at resolution number two oh one eight, that was approved by the board at that time, it increased the fee for the first time since two thousand eight from twenty-five on the residential side to fifty dollars, and then it increased in the square footage for all of the non-residential categories. So if you see those side by side, that's the difference in what was first enacted in the green column, the second column, from twenty-five dollars to what was enacted by resolution two oh one dash eighteen in blue, when it went from twenty-five to fifty, and then the various increases in the square footage. So now we go to the question of the day, where all of the, uh, threshold issues seem to be centered. In the fiscal year nineteen budget process, which would implement an increase in the fire fee for fiscal year twenty, that increase came the very next year, one year after the fiscal year eighteen increase from twenty-five to fifty. At that time fiscal year nineteen, the adopted budget for the fire department was forty-one point six million dollars or forty-two million dollars for talking purposes. The fire department had grown to an F T E complement of two hundred and thirty-four point seventy-five employees, and the city's population had increased to a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. The resolution indicates that Government Services Group, G S G, updated the fire assessment methodology. It noted that the operating costs of the department significantly increased. It anticipated additional costs related to the firefighters' pension and building renovations. It also recognized the acquisition and maintenance of fire trucks, equipment, hoses, and apparatus. I want to footnote that from the very inception of the program, the board did not implement the full amount that was determined by G S G. The board didn't implement the full amount in the two thousand eighteen increase from twenty-five to fifty dollars, nor did the board implement the full amount that was permitted by the study for F Y nineteen, which went into effect for F Y twenty. So clearly, the intent was for the fire fee to fund a portion of the costs for the department that were eligible to, uh, be funded, not to fully fund those expenses. So when we look at the adoption of the increase, where it went from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars on the residential side. At the board's August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, meeting, it was a work session, your former city administrator did that presentation to the board and made the case, and he was assisted by our current fire chief, Chief Matty. That presentation then led to the August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen public hearing, wherein resolution number two five two dash nineteen actually established the new rates. And those new rates, as indicated, took it from the fifty dollars the year before on the residential side to a hundred, and then the various, uh, increases in the square footage. I would note that I believe in the institutional category, that rate actually decreased slightly. So again, if you look at the history of the rates, uh, here on the fire fee, twenty-five for that ten-year period, the fifty dollars for that one year, and then it increased to a hundred dollars where it stands presently. So if you look at how the city has progressed in terms of population, how the fire department has grown in terms of F T Es, and in terms of its budget over the period that are connected to the increase of the fees and the enactment, you see how we started out at thirty-two million, forty million, and now at forty-two million, and then you see how the city's population has grown and how the F T E count has grown as it relates to F Y nineteen. The F Y T, uh, the F T E count is actually higher now than the two hundred and thirty-four because we've added additional, uh, firefighters. So again, if we just look at in terms of how the revenue has come in from F Y nineteen to the current year, F Y twenty-one, you see, we started at the four million, then went to six point nine million or seven million, to then seven point seven million in terms of the adopted budget. Seven point seven million if we use eight million for rounded, uh, for talking purposes. And then look at interest, the total revenue, there were some carryforward dollars. If you look at the bottom of the, uh, slide, you see what the total revenue was for those three years. Four point five million rounded for twenty, fiscal year nineteen, six point nine or seven million for fiscal year twenty, eight point eight or nine million for the current fiscal year of twenty-one, which is ending very shortly. When you look at the carryforward, uh, for fire station seven, one, and two, the roof replacement, the door and windows, and the roof repairs, the letters there indicate where those uses are permitted under the ordinance, and again, you have the ordinance in front of you for reference. If we look on the expenditure side by way of categories, which is how we budget, and the line item detail is available to the board as it is available to members of the public. Uh, the personnel services, uh, it tells you how much was used during that, uh, those three fiscal years. Material services, the internal service charge, capital outlay, and then debt service. Again, the highlighted letters in yellow indicate in the ordinance where those expenses are permitted. Again, the board has that for reference in hard copy, and hard copy can be made available to members of the public as well. So just by way of some highlights for this, uh, fiscal year in the adopted budget, we did, uh, allocate, uh, a portion of the fire fee for salaries and benefits. Uh, one was the assistant fire chief, which was a new position put into the fire fee, and that was done, if the board will recall, for this year's budget, because we were grappling with that seven million dollar revenue loss, we were looking at ways to take the burden off of the general fund. This was one of the methodologies that was utilized. Uh, the other, uh, positions are dialed in there to the tune of one point six million dollars. Uh, for the nine firefighters that were dialed into the fire fee, we, uh, use a portion of that to purchase their uniforms and bunker gear, and then there is internal service funds, uh, related to I T and insurance, uh, that was also covered by the fee. Again, the yellow highlighted, uh, num, uh, letters, uh, relate to the categories in the ordinance that allows for the funds to be spent on those particular items or categories. And we could, you'll go on to other highlights in terms of how the fees have been utilized. Again, the letters in yellow corresponds to letters within the ordinance that legally permit the city to use fire fee revenue for those various items. They all relate to the fire department, they do not relate to any other operation. And that list continues. When you look at debt service, we took out, uh, a letter of credit, and so that's the debt service that we are paying, uh, for that letter of credit, the, uh, eight-some million dollars that were drawn down. So again, we'll get to, I guess, the issue of the day here with, uh, this matter. Answering the question on whether or not, at this present time, under the current administration, the use of the fire fees are being done in a legally permissible manner. If you look again at ordinance forty-one, forty, we are complying with the ordinance in terms of how the fees are used. If you look at Article one, section one point oh one, those are the various categories that those funds are being used for. You have the deputy city attorney who made the presentation to the board at the onset of this has been inter, uh, integrally involved. If there are legal questions, uh, I would ask that you direct those to Ms. Urchak about the legal permissibility of those, uh, funds in that manner, as well as the city attorney. So I want to pause here, mayor, so if there are questions of the attorneys, uh, those can be asked before I go on to, uh, number two.
Are there any questions, comments on the first portion, item one, the permissibility of the use of the funds? Any questions? Okay, there are none, so you can proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go on to address the discrepancy from my perspective of what was presented to the board back in August of two thousand nineteen on the increase in the fees from the fifty dollars to the hundred dollars, which is in place now. And having reviewed the written record, having reviewed the video from the meeting, I want to recognize that while the written record lays out actions and what was put it, put into the record, there may have been one-on-one discussions with the commissioners and with the mayor on the use of these funds that I certainly wouldn't be privy to, and I'm not going to try to speak to that. If there was written commitments made to members of the board that doesn't try with the action that you all adopted, that's something I'm going to ask you to share with me because I'm not going to make any innuendos of what, about what might have been said and what might have been promised. I have to go on the written record and what I heard by looking at the videos. So I'm also going to speak to the missed opportunities, how we came about with adding the nine additional firefighters, what was included and excluded, uh, from the adopted budget. So if I can do this... Where's my I T guy? So let's take a walk back to two thousand nineteen August, when the presentation was made, and, and that was a very long meeting. There was quite a bit of numbers from the public, but we're just going to do a snippet because it goes right to the heart of the issue about the increase in the fees and what was represented in terms of how they would be used.
We are ready to resume, uh, the city commission meeting. We are on item number eighteen, which is public hearing of resolution number two five two dash nineteen, establishing the rates for the fire service assessment fee for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and approving the assessment role. Mr. Green?
Yes, Jeff Green, city administrator, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move it to...
It's going to be the same presentation that we gave at the workshop.
Of the use of the increase.
We're going to try and go through.
Is, is supporting, you know, various positions, um, as from my understanding, so.
And I, I would also point out, because we also got this question, and I, I think it's good for everyone to hear it, you know, some places don't have this fee. But for example, Palm Beach County doesn't charge a fire, um, a fire assessment fee, but they do dedicate three and a half mils of the property taxes in those areas that are covered by the county fire service towards those costs. We don't have that luxury because we have one mileage rate that is basically combined to provide coverage for everything that we have.
That's one more question, mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you, could you talk about the, uh, improved I S O rating? And my question would be, so, you know, we anticipate if this were to pass, that we would, um, be approximately seven point three million dollars with six point nine million collected.
Yes.
Where are those funds going? Are they, are they going for additional staff? Are they going for equipment, all of the above? Can you, do we have, I'm assuming we have an idea, a clear idea of where those funds are going to be?
I will tell you that, again, based on what year we're talking about, we're going to be adding these capital spending numbers that I showed you before of about thirty million dollars. It is our plan, um, if this passes, to, um, go ahead and do the staffing for nine additional positions. We will accelerate two trucks into next year. Um, that will, in effect, cover the first year's worth of costs, and then going forward, it will, you know, it will go towards additional capital trucks and, um, station nine.
But an additional nine full-time positions added to the city.
That's right.
Okay.
So in terms of what was presented to the board, you've just heard, uh, that presentation of the additional increase being used for nine additional firefighters and two trucks on the basis that an additional three million dollars in revenue was going to be collected. And here is where, when we talk about the fallacies in that presentation, what the board adopted in F Y twenty, if you look at the six point nine... board adopted in FY '20, if you look at the $6.9 million over the $4 million, rounded, that is about an additional $3 million. So that would have covered the nine firefighters and one truck. The presentation of two trucks did not include enough funding to fund a second truck and then a second set of firefighters to staff that truck. So that was the fallacy in the presentation. If $3 million of additional revenue was going to be generated from the increase in the fees, and that $3 million was enough to cover nine firefighters and nine trucks, when it's presented that you're going to bring two trucks in and you need another nine firefighters to cover that, if you will, then the revenue would have had to generate $6 million to cover that. So from my perspective, based on the math, the numbers don't work. The numbers simply don't work. And in talking to the city's fire chief, she's indicated that she is not clear on how the nine firefighters came about, because that would not have been the number of firefighters that she would have determined we needed to fund an additional truck. Her number would have been higher. So if I were to take the advice of the city's fire chief, which for this purpose I am, that would have been a higher number than nine. So again, if you look at that higher number and a fire truck, $3 million would have been tight. There was absolutely no additional revenue coming in to cover another set of firefighters and a second truck. Again, a fallacy in the presentation. This is what was adopted in the FY '20 budget, $6.9 of $7 million. And in all of the nuances, I'm certain that the board didn't drill down and ask the question to go back to that August presentation and say, you made a presentation or representation that it was going to be nine firefighters and two trucks. If we're adopting $7 million, which is only $3 million, how does that math work? How can we get two sets of firefighters and two trucks out of $3 million if one set of firefighters and one truck cost us $3 million? The math doesn't work. A fallacy in the presentation.
Hold on, we have a question. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Administrator. To that question, I guess, here would be the question that I have, having sat through that hearing. I guess during that time, we're looking at fire assessment fees that cover one-time capital costs. So my assumption, good, bad, and different, during that conversation was not that just the incremental increase was going towards those firefighters and that truck, but that the entire pot of revenue would somewhat absorb that as well. So it wasn't just the incremental increase at that time, going from 50 to 100, where we said, we're going to have this incremental increase that's going to cover those firefighters and equipment, but it was the whole collection. So as year prior, fire assessment fees went to cover one-time capital fees, so I wouldn't be paying for the same truck the following year. I'd be paying for something different. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and it's understood, and I'm speaking specifically to what was represented. What was represented, that that increase would be used for the nine firefighters and two trucks. And if you go back to what was said, the two trucks would be accelerated and brought into the budget. So now, whether or not there was intent, and again, there could have been discussion, again, that I was not privy to, that in looking at the overall budget for the fire assessment fee, that it was going to absorb two set of additional firefighters, whether the number was nine that was presented or 13 that the fire chief felt is needed, and then two new trucks. But based on the allocation, that wasn't dialed in. That wasn't dialed in, and that could have certainly been the intent.
Sure, and having been the recipient of that presentation, I guess I had, I had a different interpretation than thinking it was going to be the increment, because my interpretation was that the entire collection would be allocated, to some extent, to those pieces of equipment. So I guess it's a, I see how it could be ambiguous in interpretation, but at the time, and when I adopted it, I did that based upon the fact that I thought it was the entire increment. So the funding was there, and the math did work for those. So I guess I just offer that as a, as a perspective, sitting on the other side of this day. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, so noted. But again, when we look at, you know, missed opportunities, if, in fact, the way that the budget was adopted or presented there at the August 26th, if there was some concern about what was represented to the board, was not included in the budget, or if there was any ambiguity about it or confusion, there were some opportunities to have rectified the record by the leadership that's questioning this. The board at the first public hearing on September 12th certainly could have had another discussion to make certain everybody was clear that this budget for the fire fee needs to include the additional firefighters to cover these two trucks, and to clarify and make sure that the two trucks were dialed into the budget. The nine firefighters were not included in the FY '20 budget. If you look at the FYT count, the firefighters were not included in the budget that the board adopted for FY '20. They were not included, and the record shows that. So when the fire chief came to me and said, we were indicated or told that we were getting nine new firefighters, and that's what was presented to the board, I'm ready to bring them online. Well, when I go to the budget and talk to finance and talk to HR, they tell me no additional firefighters were adopted in the budget. There's no money in the budget, you know, to hire them. Chief bought the engine one back into service, so because they were not put in the FY '20 budget, we then had to use existing personnel. That part of the story that's being put out is accurate. That part of it is accurate. We staffed it with overtime, and that overtime was in excess of $1 million. When we started getting into the budget process for FY '21, Chief Matt and I looked at how much we were spending in overtime compared to how much it would cost the city for the nine firefighters, and it was a saving of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And the decision was made to then put the nine firefighters in this year's budget under the fire fee, as was presented. So that's how they got in the budget for this year. But they were clearly not included in the budget for FY '20. Again, a fallacy in the representation that was made to the board.
Ms. Johnson, let me make sure I understand. So there were two budget hearings, one on September 12th, 2019, another on September 26th, 2019. And the budgets that were presented in those budget hearings, are you saying that in those budgets, the nine additional firefighters were not in the drafts of the budget presented at those two hearings?
That is what I'm saying, and the budget manager can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McDermott, do you?
Yes.
I think you're on.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm confirming that. On both hearings, there were no FTEs added to the fire assessment fee.
Thank you.
So in an effort to...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Shoff has a question.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, because I know we're going back in time, but, you know, I guess when something is presented to this board, I assume that it's going to be put into a presentation and presented to us as factual. Does anyone know why those firefighters were not put in? Was it just overlooked? Was it that someone was directed not to put them into the budget?
I'm going to let the budget manager speak to that. I want to footnote that during the time of your two budget hearings in September 2019, I was about a month on the job as an assistant city administrator, so I can't speak to anything that happened with that budget, because I was just coming on board. Ms. McDermott?
Yes, Budget Manager, and she's absolutely correct. But what happened with these hearings is, I was completely at shock that nine firefighters were going to even be considered. And at the time, the general fund budget had been pretty much done and accounted for. When this came in, I did ask my boss at the time, are we to make a quick scramble to rearrange the general fund as well as the fire assessment fee fund? There was no discussion with Jeff Green at that time. I made a couple of inquiries, and there was no direction to make any changes in the budget, and I was told to keep the presentation as it was. And that's how it ended up this way. Ms. Johnson came along, we corrected it the following year. I would like to say that we did get loans and different means of financing, that originally we were only going to get three fire trucks on a loan. We made some changes, we ended up getting four. So all along, in the next budget year and coming, we are taking care of those firetruck needs. That is, I mean, we are totally dedicated to their equipment. But you're correct, you spoke, we looked at the video again, we all went back to the video. However, there was no direction to give to budget, and that's what happened, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Proceed, Ms. Johnson.
So I want to now move on to the last issue here in terms of, you know, the commitment to hold quarterly work sessions, and maybe in terms of how it's being styled in the public, you know, of administration not upholding its commitment to hold quarterly work sessions on the fire assessment fee. And it has been couched in a context of transparency. And unfortunately, when you use the term of transparency with city government, it has a negative connotation that somehow we're not being up, forthright with what we're doing, so we're not being transparent. And I would remind you, Mayor, and the commission, that all governments operate under the sunshine law. So everything we do is made available to the public. There is no such thing that we can operate, and how we operate cannot be disclosed to the public. From my perspective, it goes to an issue of just reporting out, not an issue of whether or not we're being transparent, because there's nothing that we do that we can't make available to the public. So this first issue, based on my review of the meetings, came up during the presentation with your former city administrator. There was quite a bit of robust discussion and the board's desire to have quarterly work sessions, updates on the use of the fire assessment fee. That was in August of 2019, as we just walked through a clip of that presentation. Because the former city administrator transitioned from the city in October of 2019, two months after the presentation, there were no quarterly work sessions held with the board. So we then went through this interim period, from October to January, where I was the interim city administrator, was then appointed permanent city administrator in January of 2020. When we got to the budget meetings that August and September, then Commissioner Nearing brought up the fact about quarterly work sessions being held, we put a schedule for quarterly work sessions in the work session schedule that was distributed. I take responsibility as now the city administrator sitting in the saddle. We had the first quarterly update on the fire assessment fee in January of 2021. And as the board will recall, that presentation perhaps was in a confusing manner. The mayor made it clear he was not pleased with the format of the presentation, and that he wanted to see it come back in a manner where it could be clearly laid out and understood. And to my detriment, which I take responsibility for, I stepped in and asked the staff to not bring forward a presentation on the use of the funds until I can get my arms around the fire assessment fee and understand it. Because if I'm going to have to answer the questions and help explain to the board what is being done with the fire assessment fee, I have to understand it myself. And my way of understanding it is a combination of what I'm informed of orally from the staff, and then my own reading of the fire assessment fee, the history. So I didn't have the luxury to just drop everything else that I am responsible for as the city administrator, and just focus on the 12-or-so-year history to get up to speed on it. So there was not, there was not an update, a quarterly update in April or July, as had been dialed into your work session. That falls squarely on my shoulder. The reason for it not being done, I'm giving you a reason, not an excuse, and I'm not asking you all to give me a pass, but I'm asking you all to not accept that in the context that as your city administrator, it's an effort to hide or disguise how the use of those funds have been done. You know, that simpler is illogical thinking, illogical thinking, to put that story out into the atmosphere. So when we go on to the use of them, I provided this in hard copy, and hard copies are available for members of the public, in terms of how the funds have been used. Again, all of the use of the funds by category are consistent and in compliance with the ordinance 4141-08. And we can go through the various line items, we can provide the board, as well as members of the public, as well as members of the press, who found this story to be newsworthy, all of the itemized detail. I also want to footnote that as part of the city's annual review by the external auditor of our finances, they looked at the fire assessment fee. If there was any misuse, misapplication, or misappropriation of those fees, it would have been noted in the annual financial statement, and there is no such notation. That information is available to you, Mayor, and the board, as well as members of the public and members of the press. So we have to line up the facts with the story, and the facts tell that the city is using those fees in compliance with the law, as is legally permissible. So where do we go from here?
Let me ask another question, a question. Is there anything in the law that requires a quarterly reporting out of the fire assessment fee?
There is nothing in the ordinance that requires that. That was a request from the commission, and it was made on two different occasions. The first request came at the time of the former city administrator, and the second request came under my administration.
But it's not a legal requirement?
It is not a legal requirement. No, it is not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Administrator, for this summary sheet. I just had a question on the funds. Could someone tell me what Fund 210 for debt service actually goes for and Fund 304 for capital?
Sure. Linda McDermott, Budgets. 210 fund is where we transfer money for principal and interest, and that is for the capital. Most of it is for their fire trucks, some of it is for the buildings. And then you also have other transfers for capital, which you might see as identified as Fund 304, and that is for absolute assets that are purchased and considered capital. And another comment, the Budget Office does quarterly review of every fund, general fund as well. So our general, of course, we do it in accounting methods, which is a lot of numbers, and Ms. Johnson is trying to summarize it a little bit better for the board's understanding, but at any time, we do quarterly... But at any time, we do quarterly reports. I have meetings with department heads. So that's a practice of the Budget Department. And my responsibility to know where we stand at all times. So I just want to make you comfortable.
You may proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So in terms of next steps, next week, on August 10th, the board has a budget work session wherein there will be a presentation on the proposed general fund balance budget at the board's pleasure. We can also include the presentation on the proposed FY22 use of the fire assessment fee. That would be an opportunity for you to go through a line item review in terms of what is proposed. And we can include in that proposed budget on the fire fees where those particular proposed uses comport with the ordinance. And then at the August 23rd City Commission meeting, the board will hear a presentation on the preliminary general fund balance budget that will take into consideration any input that is feasible from the August 10th work session. Again, we can go through the fire fee proposed uses on August 23rd. And then moving on to September 8th, which is the first public hearing on the proposed adopted budget. That's another opportunity. If the board wants to continue to drill down in the fire assessment fee revenue proposed budget, we can also do it again at your September 23rd second and final budget hearing on the general fund budget and all of the other budgets. So at the board's pleasure, we can bring forward the proposed budget for the fire fee assessment revenue another four times here between now and the September 23rd.
Let's plan on having that information at August 10th. That'll give me and the Commissioners a week to go through this document. And then, so on August 10th, you can plan to have a discussion of the proposed. So this will be the proposed expenditures from the fire fee going forward, correct?
Yes, and that is, that is prepared.
Okay. Does that work, Commissioners? Okay.
And Mayor, at this time, I would like to open it up for any questions that you and the board may have of the fire chief regarding the fire fees or the operations of the department, as well as any further questions for the budget manager, and certainly any further questions from Deputy City Attorney Nancy Erchak. And any further questions for me as well. And I thank you for sitting through this presentation and having to take a walk back into how we got to where we started from to where we are today. So I want to thank you for your patience here.
Just a point of clarification, on the 10th, be prepared to answer any questions on the third quarter expenditure. It's expenditures to date, or at least the third quarter on the fire assessment fee. And then the proposed budget going forward. So there are two aspects, right?
Yes.
So in effect, we will have the quarterly, the third quarter report, if you will, on the fire assessment fee on the 10th, which is the document you just handed us.
That is correct.
And so we'll have an opportunity to ask any questions on that document. And then you'll have a presentation on expenditures, proposed expenditures for the fire assessment fee going forward.
Yes, for fiscal year '22.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator for putting all of this together. You know, I certainly, having gone through this process through several iterations and under different administrators, I think this has brought a lot of light to the uses of the fire fee. And one of the things I had previously requested, and I think we're probably a little far down the road now for our upcoming fiscal year, but I think it would behoove us to have a five-year or a 10-year plan for the fire assessment fee. I think it would give us a chance to take a look at how much we want to dedicate to the built environment, to equipment. If there are positions that are going to be funded out of this fee in perpetuity, you know, what portion is allocated to staff? I think those are important questions that, you know, certainly the fire chief has an important say to weigh in on, and Mayor, fellow Commissioners. According to what our needs are, you know, I know Commissioner Peduzzi's district having a nice new fire station, needs some staffing. And, you know, every one of us has needs throughout our districts. And so to try to get together a master plan, knowing what's coming down the line, I think that would be helpful for me and helpful for the public that as we're going down the road and we do end up on a general cadence of fee updates, then that gives the opportunity to say, here's where we are today with the fire fee. Here's where we are in our capital plan. And on the outlook, has something in the environment changed that we need to change our outlook of what our fire assessment fee master plan is?
Yes, and Commissioner Shoff, you have certainly made that noted in the record. And so as we look at down the road, what I have put on the slide for the board's consideration, you know, is that sometime in the fall of, well, it has fallen for fiscal year '22, but that would be in this upcoming fall, which would be '21. But we're planning for the FY23 budget process that we have, that strategic planning session. And then take a look at, you know, those kinds of matters here and start planning for, you know, how we want to utilize or if we want to change the use of the fire fee. Because you, you need to do that in advance of getting into the budget process. So if we were to do that this coming fall, I can take that direction and dial it into the budget process for fiscal year '23. So again, I'm asking the Mayor and your consideration to have such a strategic planning session in this fall. The budget process usually kicks off in February of every year. So if we were to do it in the fall, that gives me enough lead time to take that direction from there and then dial it into the budget for fiscal year '23 moving forward.
Great, thank you for scheduling that, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the clarification and the presentation. I just wanted to go back a little bit to the 2019 video we were watching and just touch upon the idea that we were raising the fire fee because we needed additional services. I believe that video went on to say we needed two trucks and 18 new firefighters. I thought the number that was given was around 3 million for the total, but I understand that was a previous administration. But I guess my concern is that I know that we don't have those, we don't have two new fire trucks in place and we don't have 18 new firefighters in place. So I'm concerned that we, while we're using the fee in a legal manner because it's all going towards the fire department, my understanding was those were the needs to have additional services offered to our residents. So I'm just wondering, you know, if we have a plan in place for, you know, going back and looking at that, are those still our needs? Do we have a plan for another fire truck and these additional firefighters? Or is there something, another plan? It might be a question for Chief Matty. But, you know, if those were the things that we were telling our residents that were necessary and we were going to be putting more services in place for them, that's why we voted for this and why I voted for it last year. And I just want to make sure that we're still on track with those items. Thank you.
I'm going to let Chief Matty speak to that, but I do want to just make one footnote. What was represented was nine firefighters and two trucks. And what I indicated, that if nine is needed for one truck, then another nine would have been needed for the second truck. But the representation was for nine in two trucks. I'll let Chief Matty speak to the balance of the question.
Thank you for the question, Diana Matty, Fire Chief. So there are a number of outstanding needs. We did get 50% of that accomplished. We got Engine One back in service downtown, bringing a pumper back into service in our most densely populated zone that had been previously taken out of service in 2009 due to the economic decline at that time. So it was a big step forward in improving our staffing, going towards our future ISO review rating, to have that pump and water back downtown and improve those response times. So there remains a number of existing needs throughout our city, to include Fire Station Nine is currently living in a trailer. And, you know, it's a temporary facility that we have to evacuate during hurricanes, and that's a pressing need. As the population grows in Station Eight's area, we're going to need to eventually fully staff that area. We have a building downtown where our fire station number one was built in 1979 and they moved in in 1980. That is beyond its lifespan and beyond its physical capacity for the services we provide now. Station Six in Commissioner Warren's zone is, was built for three people in 1985. Again, another, another need. So I do agree with your Commissioner Shoff's urging that we do a strategic plan, because there are some very significant needs that this fire department has and the city has going forward. And we can't lose focus on those things, you know, in the big picture. So if that answers your question, maybe I can fine tune it if you have any further.
Let me weigh in on that, because what was articulated in 2019 as the needs of the department was the view of a particular stakeholder, i.e. the union. That didn't come from the fire chief at that time articulating that this is what she needs the fire assessment fee for. So don't get it confused that that was necessarily the official position from the fire department as to what the needs were. That was the view of the union as to what they wanted to see the fire assessment fee for. And they were saying that in order for us to support the increase in the fire assessment fee, we need to get X, Y, and Z. That wasn't necessarily the needs articulated by this person running the department at the time. That was a negotiated deal supposedly between the fire union and the then-city administrator. You understand a difference? Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, I guess where I struggled to that point is, you know, we on this Commission, especially under Sunshine Laws, are held to, former city administrator in this case, the information that were presented there. And I know you can't answer the question as to why a former city administrator wouldn't take that information back to Chief Matty. But when we receive that information, we receive it as this is what administration is pushing forward, respectfully understanding your comments previously, that that wasn't your interpretation. And so I think to Commissioner Fox's point, we took that as that was the need of the fire department. And so maybe a step from here is really determining. You know, I too struggle with, these were the promises that were made. Whatever pretense they were made under, these were the promises that were made. So where are we on fulfilling those promises? Or if that is not the need, that is the specific need, then what is it? And let's fulfill that need and make this right. You know, I think that's the place where I'd like to see us move forward is determining what is that need? There was a promise, let's fulfill that promise.
And if I could, just speak to that, and then I'll let Chief Matty chime in. Commissioner Shoff, you know, I happen to agree with you in principle. I think when a promise is made in the context of the head administrator of the organization, the board should be in a position where you trust and rely on that when you make your policy decisions. And in inheriting that, the effort that has been made to try to fulfill that promise was to staff the fire Engine One that Chief Matty pulled into service with existing personnel, discovering in the midst of the fiscal year that it was not in the budget. And then the second action that was taken in an effort to fulfill that promise was then putting the nine firefighters in the current year budget. So as we look at the effort, we are halfway down the road with fulfilling it. Not yet where we want to be, but continuing to act on that. But I want to just underscore two other situations here. You know, there are a number of inherited legacy promises that were made that we have worked through and may discover other ones that we will work through. And one is, I will help the board to recall, and I don't remember which Commissioner, it may have come from several Commissioners, about a promise that was made to PAL, the Police Athletic League, for $25,000 to help their organization, that theoretically was in our budget. The money was not put in the budget. So we unfortunately then had to tell them they relied on that. The money is not in the budget, the money can't be found in the budget because the city is struggling with closing a $10 million gap last year. There was also an incident with the Lake Worth Pioneer with a $65,000 promise or commitment. And that was actually, the agreement came before the board. When I was contacted by the attorney for that organization saying, we're ready to move forward with that monument, we have our money in place, we want the city to now bring the $65,000 to the table. When we looked in the budget, the money was not in the budget. So that put us in a very bad predicament. So the mayor and I met with the attorney and simply had to apologize that the board had approved the $65,000, it was not put in the budget, and to ask them to work with us, and they did. So they put the project on hold until we can get the money in the budget. The money is in this year's budget, so we're moving forward with that. Now, I'm not going to bore, bore the board with the list, with the ongoing list that I have been accumulating of promises, financial promises that were made and are unfulfilled. And the majority of them, I'm not in a position where we can try to work some of them out because they are big-ticket promises to the tune of millions of dollars. And so we've just had to meet with those individuals and say, this is a promise that we can't fulfill. It's not a predicament that I like to be in, but it's a predicament that I find myself in and that I inherited, unfortunately.
And thank you Administrator, I certainly understand that. And I understand some of the examples we're given were promises that were made and others are promises that were made on the record to your point about monuments and things that had come before the board. And I appreciate that we take best efforts to fulfill those promises. And I'm confident that, you know, I think that's really what I'm asking for here is how do we get that best effort forward? I appreciate that we've made it halfway there. So just to the extent that I can be supportive to get us the other halfway there as one-fifth of this dais, I stand ready to do that.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for the amount of research that went into this presentation today. I just, I wanted to comment on your comment about the lack of quarterly presentations. I certainly agree with you that we have to be careful that just because a lack of presentation was made, the quarterly reporting that we had asked for, that that did not equal misuse of the funds. I certainly get that. I think the part that I struggle with is, is that my role as a city commissioner is to ensure proper use of our budget and of our funds in the city. And when this was, when this increase was passed on the dais, we asked for those quarterly updates. And I certainly understand the reasons why they, and what you described to us for those delays. However, I think if we had had those, maybe some of this would have come up sooner, would have allowed for us to find out that it wasn't, those positions weren't in the budget. And I hope that we are now planning for them moving forward.
Yes, and again, I take responsibility for that. Because I think if I had not made the administrative call that I was going to step in the lead role of trying to get up to speed on it and then be in a position when the presentations were made, the quarterly updates, to be able to participate in the discussion because I was up to speed on it, the staff would have met the intent of holding quarterly updates to the board. So again, that falls on my shoulder, and I take responsibility for that. And I'm glad to hear you say, Commissioner Lambert, that not holding those does not equate to misuse of the funds because that's critically important. No Commissioner sitting on that dais should have an inkling of a thought, a doubt, or whether or not the city is complying with its ordinance. Rather, I made a misstep with taking the lead on it and not moving forward with the two updates, you should not have an inkling of a doubt that those funds are being used appropriately. And so we will get to the point now where we will adhere to the quarterly updates. With or without your city administrator, those quarterly updates will be held. And so I thank you for your patience and recognition that one doesn't equate to a misuse of funds.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you for your efforts to fulfill promises that have been made. Thank you for your efforts to fulfill promises that have been made. I think at some point, we have to look at the feasibility of those promises, and whether or not fulfilling all of those things are in the best direction of the city. If they were not made on sound ground, if promises were simply made for the moment, for, you know, people to feel good, then I don't know that that's something that we are in a position to ensure happens. And at some point, I think we just have to make tough decisions on what we can actually fulfill, what makes good sense for the city, and what direction we're going in. Because if we're trying to adhere to a promise that puts us in a bankrupt position, is that necessarily the right judgment? Is that the right direction that we want to take?
I couldn't agree with you more. And I want to assure you that the reason that the other list of promises that I'm not putting into the record have not been acted on, because they are not financially feasible. And it is not an option for the mayor and your city administrator to consider efforts on a failed promise that will put this city on a path to financial recovery takeover by the state. So there are a number of those failed promises that's on my growing list as I peel back, that we have sat with the individuals who are expecting us to deliver on those promises and say, unfortunately, we are not going to be able to fulfill this promise, that it was not made in a financially feasible manner that the city can meet. And so I couldn't agree with you more, and I thank you for that comment and observation.
President Peduzzi.
Thank you, mayor. If I remember correctly, back when we were initially discussing the proposed increase to the fire assessment fee, there was a lot of the same discussion as to the appropriate uses of the fee, why do we need the increased fee to get the stakeholder buy-in? There was those representations made. To get our vote for an increased fee, there were representations made. And we now know that a number of those things that were promised or were represented is going to be included were not. And so I just think that, you know, we just need to realize that this is not even a new argument. I think there was question back then when we were talking about this as to whether there was really a need for this fee, what the uses of the fee would be, and that they would actually be used appropriately in the way that the administration was representing that they would be used to get the buy-in from the stakeholders and the union, and ultimately the commissioners in voting for it. So I think that we have to remember that, and we have to be cognizant that people are listening and people are watching, and we have to have faith in our system. And, you know, we have to acknowledge that there were representations made, and they weren't fulfilled. And so we have to be careful, I think, moving forward, that we make sure that either we don't make representations that we can't fulfill, or that we fulfill the representations that we make, the promises that we make. That's just my general comment. Thank you.
And I agree with that, Commissioner Peduzzi.
Any other questions, comments on this item? All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think we have a path forward for discussions, future discussions about the fire assessment fee. So we'll look forward to that on August 10th, and we'll have that dialed in going forward for quarterly reports.
Again, thank you, board.
Okay. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. It's been kind of a long meeting. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the body, for the order? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.